All right, let's call the Kingston Springs Board of Commissioners' Public Hearing to Order. What's item on the agenda is Ordinance 16-009, Establishing the Areas of Special Flood Haughters of Kingston Springs 16, for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program by Adopting the New Theme of Flood Insurance Rate Map. Is there anyone here to speak on the flood plain maps and the applicable of the maps? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I'll call the Kingston Springs Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting for October 20th to order. Please rise and face the class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Lord, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Debbie, could you call the roll?
Corle, Gross, Lamplie, Rimmick, Stoller.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. The minutes have been circulated, everyone should have had a chance to read through them. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for September 15th? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, hearing none. Confirmation of the agenda. I have one addition, and I'd like to just go ahead and move that up to 12A, and then we'll just bump everything down from there, and it will be State Park Ranger Patterson, something he'd like to speak about, it's a popular package, so.
Go first, don't move it.
Well, I thought I'd take it. You don't have to gum up right now, we're just amending the agenda now, but soon, soon, except we've got a few.
Good, let some else go.
We've got a few other people that want to speak, I think, too, so. All right, are there any other additions to the agenda, anything else? All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Announcements from the commissioners, do you have anything, Gary?
No, I don't have anything.
Bob?
I'm good.
Poetown in the heart of the left, started a pretty good music festival, we hope to continue to have next year. Pretty good turnout, big people, good energy and great music, I was impressed.
I'm good.
All right, well, I guess the only thing I would say is this is the last meeting of this term of commissioners here, and I don't know what next month will look like, but it's been a pleasure working with all of you, so.
You too, Tom. Good luck. Bob?
No.
All right, on to community input and concerns, I think we've got a few of those, so if you could just come up, state your name and address at the podium, you're free to address the commission.
My name's Ronald Gilbo, I live in 106 Ellersley Way, and we want to see if I get the sidewalk extended from Ellersley subdivision into town. Our, the developer was supposed to be here, he was on his way, he made it, he was, yeah, I think he's going to go on here at this end of summer. Work if we can get the heat.
That's the subdivision down on the left, probably, yeah?
It's got the sidewalks nowhere on it.
Yes.
And that was required when he developed it, the city required that he put their sidewalk in there. But they never expanded into town.
Well, that's something that we can, we'll certainly look into, though.
I mean, it's a subdivision for living in a, making a place.
Yes.
And I felt I used a cane and a scooter. It would be real nice to be able to come to town with a scooter.
Certainly would.
Although, everybody can do it down the road, with four-wheelers, three-wheelers, tractors, you name it, illegally.
Thank you, yeah.
And the developer should be here, for, to speak and say what he's willing to do.
Well, we would have to amend the agenda to do that at this point, so, but hopefully, if he sticks around afterwards, he can at least speak to some of us afterwards. Do you want to add anything on the, for the same reason?
Got it, uh, we have kids, so, the Stollers and my mother-in-law, walking kids, it'd be nice for her to be able to come down, get the town spot.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, is there anyone else? We came in last, so.
All right, I think you're welcome to.
Son of SD, Grand Chicks resident.
Way back down.
This is, this is the first of several talks that I'm probably going to bring up, so I'm going to start with some low-hanging fruit. As some of you know, my wife suffers from several neurological disorders, MSB is one of the main ones, and so toxicity is important to us, and we have taken great measures on, at our house, to, we just have to be extremely careful about what goes in for dawn, and, you know, I mean, obviously, it's good practice for everyone, but Wayne, neighbor of mine, we tend to get into lots of discussions that sometimes irritate Glenn, but, but, but we got to talk, and, and, like I said, we're going to start with this, with some low-hanging fruit. I was, I was actually surprised to find out that Kingston Springs, this area, and this water district, is the only water district in Chedon County that is still putting fluorosacilic acid, AKA fluoride, in the water. And so, you know, seems kind of strange, so we took some time out and went down and talked to Mark Maran, spent some time with Mark, and just kind of picked his brain, to find out, like, why in the world would we be adding any water, especially a known toxin like that? And now, I'm paraphrasing Mark, and you guys certainly have access to Mark, but Mark said, he's under no mandate to do this, it's just doing, it's just always been done. So I did some more digging, and ended up talking with Jacob Smith, of Pleasant View, he's the plant manager up there, some of you may know Jacob, and Jacob was like, man, we've never done it, in fact, the reason we didn't do it is because of that pride from the local community, he said, and on top of that, even if we would have done it, it's an extremely expensive lineup. Now, I've reached out to Wanda Baker and Bill Zimmerman, because I want to get that dollar, I want to find out what that dollar money is, because, you know, it's down to smoke, and arrogant, but I think I can save you guys some money, why are we putting that in the water? And, and I just want to get this ball rolling as to, what do we got to do to take it out?
Also, I think Mark was saying that the injection pump is 16 years old, and could be failing at any time.
City doesn't own the water pump, but probably will not.
And they have board meetings, and Zimmerman would be the person, but we have very little input or control over what the water department does.
Part of the reason this discussion is trying to understand the relationship, because obviously, there's lots of layers behind it, so.
Yeah.
And, and, and I have, I have asked, I have asked around about this in the past, and it's always been, it's always, the sentiment seems to be that it just, it's somehow mandated or tied to funding, so, I mean, it's just, I, ultimately, who, who is, who is making this call, and who can we get with to make sure that this practice is stopped?
You'd have, you'd have to actually talk to the utility, I mean, they operate, they're the South Chedon Utility District, second South Chedon Utility District, and they operate completely autonomously, you know, and.
So there's no, there's no relationship with the city whatsoever?
Just that they collect our bill, I mean, they.
They collect, they collect the city's bill, but that's, that would be the only, only relationship that they have. And you'll find that with a lot of utilities, municipality relationships, pretty much countrywide, and.
So they're standalone third-party entities?
Yes.
Pretty much? Do, do they, do they have any authority, or is it assumed authority, I mean, how, how is this working, like, why are they, you know, why are they, why are they able to, why are they able to do what they do? Do they just do it because?
They have a, they have a charter from the state, am I correct, their utility district with a charter from the state, I mean, there's, I can't say it's a public meeting, but John Oliver did an excellent section on independent utility districts, it would explain it very well, but that's, that's, that's how they are, I mean, so they, they operate independently. But I mean, there's a valid concern, I'm sure, I'm sure that they would, that would be the route you could take, to deal with, that would be the.
So, so the, so the individual that we should discuss this with next, would be who? Okay, I'm, I'm really, I mean, Mark Maran is the plant manager, I mean, I really just want you guys to know, you're not responsible for those people up there, just seems like, I spent a considerable amount of time with him, and, you know, this seems that that would have come up, but apparently it didn't. All right, do you have anything to add to that? The, the other thing is, is three meetings ago, I stood here and presented what I thought was a fairly well-put-together, high-level proposal about what it would take to get handicap access from the existing pond, to park, down to the river, and I wanted to be clear then, and I wanted to be clear now, I'm not looking to fund it, I can get it funded, and I'm not looking to build it, I can get it built, I'm looking to find out what hoops and hurdles do I need to jump through and jump over to get that done, and I, if you want, I can tell you guys up for a couple hours telling you all the efforts that I have made to, to ask these questions, I have got zero response, I need no response, so I'm wondering if another tactic that I might take is, maybe I, I mean, you guys tell me, maybe I should just go start building down there and wait for someone to approach me, because if someone approaches me, then I can go, hey, got your attention. So, so what, what do I got to do to get this access? What, I want to start this conversation, I want to get this done, and I, I'm running into, I don't know, bureaucratic silence.
Did you try to contact Larry Nash, like we suggested?
No, I actually tried to contact you, because you had mentioned that your son, through the Corps of Engineers, might have something, and I, I was unsuccessful there, and I, I actually tried to contact the Corps of Engineers from about four different angles, and got zero response.
Larry Nash is a guy you need to get, he's at Chedon Dam, and he's the guy that's kind of head of this area for all that.
Larry Nash?
Nash, N-A-S-H.
Larry Nash? Okay, all right.
You heard silence from us, because it was out of our hands.
No, I know, I know that, so I was back here saying, guys, look, I want to get this done, I want to get this done, so help me jump over these hurdles, help me jump through these hoops, I'm getting, I'm getting zero, I mean, I just want to know, I just want to know who to talk to, or either just start doing it and wait to see what the consequences are.
Larry Nash's telephone number.
All right, so, so we'll start with Larry. I appreciate that.
I've got his number.
He's totally giving you his phone number.
You want his number?
That would be great.
Okay, it's 792.
792.
5697.
5697.
You're welcome.
Maybe sit next to Gary back there, he might be able to tell you about the other side of the river. All right. All right, on to the consent agenda, department reports have been circulated, we haven't yet to add to those.
I have a question for you all. These department reports were devised because at that time, staff.
Was not here.
Was not here. I, I kind of find them very redundant, and since they're here for you all to ask questions, I wanted to know if we had your approval to not do those.
Do you think in place we could have the department heads give a report?
Well, that, I told them, since I'm giving you a weekly report, that, you know, we could include those things, but, you know, I'm pretty much so telling you then what they're telling you again, and plus, now they're attending the meetings and can be asked questions, if you want them to continue, that's not a problem, we just.
No, I think that would be fair enough, you know, cuts down on the paper and what.
And if there's anything that we don't get you, that you want to know, just let us know, we'll include that in there.
Okay.
Is that okay with you all?
So continue to get emails, we'll still get.
You're going to get a weekly report from me.
Weekly report, continually.
And it's going to include stuff from those departments.
We already have it.
Right, we just will no longer put these department reports in these packets. Okay?
I just think, I think we, I like the weekly report, it should do much better.
Okay.
It's more precise, and we kind of know what each person is doing each week as opposed to once a month.
Okay. Well, department heads will be very happy.
Do we get one, like, at the end of the year, though, or something?
I'll give you anything you want, I mean, I just.
No, I'm just the regular, like we were saying, just how many people have been arrested and whatfore, and, I don't mean every month, just to, six months, or, or once a year, once a year would be fine.
Kind of general statistics of.
Yeah, I mean, I think that could probably.
How many fires we've had, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think we can pull that together, or I can tell you that on a weekly basis, or, I mean, probably better do it quarterly, or every six months or something, but we'll provide you with whatever you want, just let us know.
That is nice, I think maybe quarterly or something, just to have that, so we can kind of get a general picture, especially with the fire and police reports, I think that's useful.
Okay, okay.
It's easy enough to just call it, if you email it to us, it's easy to just.
Well, but we won't be doing that, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we will just be including information in the weekly report, and then if, you know, you want to still see that police report and stuff, we can do it on a six-months, quarter, whatever you all would like.
Okay.
Is that suitable?
Yeah.
Yes.
You want it every quarter?
I'm up for quarter.
Okay.
Quarter is steady on.
And you're mostly interested in the police and the fire? What about?
Building.
Building?
Building permits, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss in those firm reports? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Legal report?
Mayor, if I could have a attorney-client meeting at the end of this meeting.
Okay, so we'll just clear the room, maybe, or?
Yes, that'd be great.
All right, on to unfinished business, which is item A, is a request from Janet Walker to add an additional, or add an addition onto the library, and Jennifer, if you have your space, then.
I do, she had come before the board last month, proposing, of course, the city owns the property, proposing to add on to the property, and at that time, had not reviewed the lease, of course, the lease is with the Chedon County, who actually maintains the library, there is a provision in there that allows with our permission, and of course, I know this is kind of the first process, before she can get funding and all of those things, so I had just, in looking at the current lease that we had, had just proposed an agreement, if y'all choose to do this, you, this would be in y'all's discretion on whether you allowed this, but the current lease says that we have to have something in writing for them to make any change, changes to the current building, so that's what I've done, is kind of done an agreement here, something in writing that would allow them to do this, and I know that, that may be something that would probably need to be negotiated with a county attorney, if it gets to that stage, if she gets the funding and things like that, but I just kind of put together a proposed agreement, if the board so chooses to allow the county to make the additions and improvements to the building.
So we could make a motion in vote on just allowing her to do that tonight, or would that be on the agreement?
You could, because from what I understood, she still has to get funding, is that correct?
There's still a lot of things, this is a very.
This is just the first step, I mean, the ground, you know.
Just to give her a green light.
Yes, and I think if y'all want to do that, I had given this to y'all, just to have some things for y'all to think about, if, if this gets to that point, and I know that this is a little premature, but I wanted to at least have something to kind of give y'all some food for thought on this, if it gets to that point, and, again, the county and their legal attorney would need to look at it.
All right, and we heard from, we heard from Ms. Walker last week, so, or last month, so we, I believe you're aware, she brought some drawings and all, so that we could kind of see what she wanted to do, and if you've had a chance to go over the library, if you have a chance to, and haven't already, she'll, I'm sure, be glad to show you exactly what it is, but I think we all are familiar with the project, so I guess I would say there's a motion to, to approve this request, to add on to the library.
Motion to approve this request to add on to the library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go forth and add on.
Don't want to get bit.
Yeah, get bit, get money first, I suppose.
When will we do this agreement?
Kind of be a second reading, Ordinance 16-009, adopting the new theme of flood insurance rate map. You've got it sitting in front of you here, which is a map we'd be adopting tonight, hopefully you'll have a chance to look over it, but I think we're all familiar with the issue. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 16-009 on second reading?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, all right. We'll move on to the new business, and our new item A would be Ranger Patterson, could you come on up and, you've got time to address the board and tell us about this?
Well, last month you all approved it, but we didn't say when to start it. It has to be done by December 1st, so I didn't know if you wanted to do that now, or if you want to wait until December 1st, what's your pleasure on that?
December 30th?
Number 30.
November 30th. Well, just tell me, so I know.
Is there, in, in the general scheme of your life and payroll and things like that, when would be an optimal date?
Well, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but, you know, if you want to make it to where, when it has to be done, well, then I'd probably just, I don't know when, what December 1st falls on.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, so payroll would be on Wednesday.
For the 30th.
November 30th. All in favor? Gordon knows what he's talking about, all right, all right. Do we have a motion to set the date for the new overtime rule to go into effect as November 30th?
Gordon, make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, all right. We'll move on to the new business, and our new item A would be Ranger Patterson, could you come on up and, you've got time to address the board and tell us about this?
I will try. Hello, everybody. What I'm here to talk about is the resolution that State Parks, our department is pushing out to the community, every State Park, all 54 State Parks are being asked to reach out to local communities and become more involved, become more involved with the local community in any way that we can. Our main goal is to provide recreational opportunities, fitness, and educational outreach. So we want to, our department is wanting us to make that more official with our local communities we interact with, and I thought Kingston Springs is one of the main communities, of course, we have 12 sites, consisting, starting in Bateson County, depending all the way to Narrows, but we have two sites very close to Kingston Springs, Kingston Springs down to City Park, and then the Highway 249, just across the bridge, and probably in the Pecorum District, but we are part of this community, of course, I live here, my family lives here, and the park's address is here, and we want to reach out to Kingston Springs first, to have an official resolution agreement to work together, and what that means to me is, you know, we're already working together on something, and we see each other, and, you know, work when we're needed, but special events, runs, walks, park operations, things that we can assist you guys with, this would give us an official document that say, yeah, we can, when you call us, we can come help out at the Easter egg hunt, or at the Halloween, or parade events, and we can come help, then request, and then, you know, we have something that we need assistance on, we can ask, does it mean, you know, you're required to do anything, from what my reading is, does it require us, I mean, to do anything, other than work together on things that bring community together and enhance Kingston Springs as a place to live? So if, have y'all had a chance to look at the resolution, you got to talk to them, I got extra. So that's my request tonight, is that you consider the resolution between Harpert River State Park and Kingston Springs, to just work together in an official, more official capacity on all work needed.
Jennifer, did you have something to add in there?
No, I just, I looked at it when I first got here, it looks fine.
It's fine, I got my box, so. And it's, so it's just really kind of a, a, a sign of friendship, but it sounds like more than anything, there's no real legal binding here, but it's obvious, you know, that our parks do function together, and, you know, the City Park having someone, having a State Park, Park access within it, and the Harpert River being such an important part of this community, it's a, a nice show of goodwill, maybe the two parks. All right, well, thank you so much, does anyone else have anything to ask?
Can you anybody help thread traffic?
Do we need to want the motion to move in?
Please.
Do we have a motion to, to approve this collaborative effort to support the Harpert River State Park in Kingston Springs, Tennessee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
Now, Tony, I'll have to sign that a resolution number, but, and I don't have that, but it will be a resolution.
Motion to sign the resolution, right?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion, our resolution passes. All right, on to Mr. Westerman, and an update on the wastewater board issues.
I assume you're aware, we did receive, or the wastewater system did receive, I noticed some violations from PDEC, we sent an initial letter, which was required fairly quickly, like 30 days, and then we actually, the mayor, and Debbie, and Clint, and I, went and met with them, and went over their concerns, the initial letter addressed some things that they wanted cleared up quickly, these are laboratory testing procedures, sampling procedures, those type of things, things that we could say, yes, we see your recommendation, and Clint said, yeah, I've done this and done this, and we showed them that we've done that, and we put that in the letter, they wanted to discuss and talk more long-term about some other things, but some of the violations were permit violations, where we exceeded, or we were to discharge, now, I don't think any of us can tell you for sure if that was a sampling error, testing error, or we actually did exceed it, but we did come up with a plan in order to, to address that, the plan that we looked at, which we really need based on flow, is to build another lagoon itself, which the city has the land to do that, and add some additional aeration. They liked that, they wanted to put in writing, were prepared to put that part in writing, but they wanted something done short-term along that line, which would require an upgrade of the electrical service to the plant, which would be required anyhow for an expansion, and putting, upgrading one of the aerators in the plant to help, to make sure we've got enough dissolved oxygen going in to treat the waste to meet the limits. Clint was able to obtain some aerators very inexpensively from Spring Hills, so we do have an aerator we can swap in there, we just have enough electricity to run it, the service was sized literally for what was there, and there's nothing left to spare. I did an initial estimate for the expansion of the lagoon and all the work that went into that, building a new chlorine contact chamber, doing some aeration on the tail end to make sure we meet one of the limits, which is dissolved oxygen, also to help us get rid of some of the excess chlorine that we might have in the effluent, because that was some, some of the violations were based on chlorine, Clint has already obtained a pump that would be, that would paste itself based on the flow coming through the plant, so if the flow's down, if it's less chlorine in, if the flow's up, if it's more chlorine in. Hopefully, that will help us stay within the chlorine limit, but there were some other things that we needed to do also. My initial estimate was about seven hundred thousand dollars. Now, I was a little limited in what I had, that I wanted for the estimate, because the only topo plan I have of the site is not correct anymore, because there's been dirt moved down there using the park.
Did I miss, you included the actual, the third lagoon, correct?
Third lagoon, sorry.
I, I didn't hear you saying that.
The electrical grade is somewhere, I'm gonna guess about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
But, but my, my number for the whole thing was about seven hundred thousand total project. The limiting factor in me making that estimate and saying that's a good estimate is, I don't know what the grades are down there, so I don't know if we've got enough dirt, too much dirt, or not enough dirt. So we may have to haul in dirt, that, that changed it, because the big part of building a lagoon is earthwork. So I know Clint has had some clearing done, and surveyors are supposed to be doing a topo of the site, which would let me tie down the quantities of earthwork. I, I estimated them based on what I had, I put a unit price on them, I think the unit price is good. I don't have a clue what the quantities are, because I just don't have anything going. So, so that's something that'll be updated, you know, down the road, and that's a next year project. The upgrade of the electrical in order to go ahead and do this work and put this additional aerator in, something we'd like to do immediately, and actually, we've got to write another letter, a report, to tell them what we're gonna do, short-term, long-term, and we didn't feel like we needed to send that letter to them until the board knew what we were doing. So Debbie has said, I appreciate she money she has and funds to do it, but still, that's an expenditure that's coming up. So I'm gonna let you know about that. And the other item that they, that they talked to us about was extraneous flows, or what we call implosion infiltration, which is rainwater and groundwater getting into the sewer system, because we see flows at the plant that range from two hundred thousand gallons a day, or maybe as low as a hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, to over seven hundred fifty thousand a day when it's raining. So we've got some problems added to the system. We, we outlined to them an initial plan to try to start isolating, determine what parts of the system those are in, and then bring them a more defined plan on how to, to locate those and address those. Right now, I don't have enough experience, I'm insisting to tell you where they might be. One of the easiest ways, and Clint has sent me quite a bit of data to compile and analyze, is to look at our pump stations, since there's a lot of pump stations in town, each one serves a specific area, is to look and see the run hours each day of them when it's dry, and see how they change when it's wet, and obviously, the ones that change a lot is the areas we got to concentrate. So that's our first step, is try to say, do we have to have it everywhere, or do we have just pockets, and based on these pump stations? And then we'll have to go from there and try to get down, isolate, measure flow in round holes, and do some smoke testing and things, to see if we can determine, that, that's kind of where we are, we're in initial stages of all of this. But this letter would put forth that we would try to get started on electrical upgrades sometime this year or the first quarter of next year, so that we can move, move the salary around for some more. If you have any questions, I know I covered a lot of things very quickly.
And in the, in the initial draft of the letter too, it said that we plan to put the third lagoon in. And that was actually like when I, the reason I, you were here tonight, is because that came to me to sign, and I told Debbie, well, I can't sign that, saying that we do that without the board, the board approving, doing that. And, and I guess to talk a little bit about that, you know, we're all aware that, that money would come out of the sewer fund, so it's not out of our, our, our general fund or anything like that, and money is a place to do that. And putting the third lagoon in would make our, our, our sewage plant infinitely more functional, it sounds like, it would keep allowing.
Put it out of the Harvard system.
Exactly.
Keep the Harvard cleaner.
It would, and what we're looking is a deeper cell lagoon. For some reason, the state was under the impression that we had a lagoon that at design had forty-five, forty-four days of detention time. I don't, I don't know who calculated that, it's got eighteen. So, so I'm looking at the lagoon that I'm looking for, a third lagoon cell would be larger and deeper, it would add about thirty days, so we basically tripled the detention time. Detention time is your friend, when you're talking about treating a lagoon, it gives you more time to break down the waste. We've got enough aerators in what Clint's acquired to put aeration in that also, so we could really add, really boost the treatment capacity of the lagoon.
It also helps us, we can shut down lagoons and want us to remove some sludge, trying to set lagoons right now, which have never been drained down.
And they, they, they can't be cut down, yeah, I think it's a, it's a concept.
Now, what, what we talked about is, is changing some piping, so we could actually take the cell at a time. Dredging is a process that sometimes is expensive. If we can drain the lagoon cell dry out and take it out with regular excavation equipment, it's much cheaper. So once the loop lagoon cell is built, we can take one cell at a time out of service and clean out the slugs that, that seems to accumulate.
What's the timeframe that we have to get this third lagoon in? Is there an ETA for the?
We did not, I told them that, that by the end of next year would be tight, if possible. If we could get every, all the designs done this winter, get a bid and build that next summer when it's dry, that we could possibly have it in line next year. I didn't promise that, I said that's what we would hope for.
But most immediately is a new aerator in place that would satisfy.
Yeah, that's the first thing we want to do, and that's something we need to do pretty quick, and that's, other than building electrical services, not very tight considering.
Right, and, and when you talk about deeper and wider, what's the square area of the lagoon, the third lagoon?
It's not wider, it's deeper.
Okay.
It's, it's about the same width as the ones that's there, but it'll be at least a third long, a third more distance in length. But the ones that are, are eighteen feet deep, and I'm looking at fifteen, sixteen foot deep, if the geological work after we've surveyed supports that. There's still a little room down there to build another one, it's not quite as conducive as building just right beside it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So, this applies to the sixty-day letter, and I guess at this point, what we need is a, a motion to, to proceed with these, with these upgrades with sewer plants, so that we can send this letter off and satisfy the wastewater board's requirements of us.
Motion to approve electrical upgrade for the sewer treatment plant.
But we need to, I mean, as the letter's drafted, we need to also approve the, say, say.
Longer rights, longer.
Saying that we plan to, we plan to put, to also, you know, do the, the, the lagoon as well.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just happy to clean up the Harvard River as much as we possibly can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, you both.
Thank you. All right, on to item B, which is requesting Dixon Electric to extend the existing distribution line to Street Road by Challenge Trail.
Do you know?
Randy.
They're just wanting to put a pole in, they're gonna have to take out one tree that's not even near the entrance to the Challenge Trail, it's the top side, kind of where the trail starts switching back down the hill.
Okay.
It's one tree, and right now, the Street Road does not have electrical service from that point until it goes across the river down over on Gerald's property, past the sewer plant. So what happens is when they lose electricity, they have, it takes three or four days for them to get back up, for those people, because of the fact they have to use the river to do it.
Yeah.
And usually, it's during a storm, so.
The river's not great.
So what they're wanting to do is just extend the line from that point all the way down to Street Road. They're literally putting as one pole, they're removing one tree. If y'all would like to go up there, it's marked on the road in orange and pink paint, the trees are marked that they're gonna remove. They are gonna have to cut back the easement, they're only removing one tree, but they are gonna cut back over the road for their easement, so. I mean, we're, we're, it won't affect that, I mean, nobody will even notice it's gone.
And it's out, it'll be a pretty, a good improvement for people to look further down Street Road. That's a deal we should have brokered there, huh? Do, do, do we have a motion to, to, oh, I think it's electric to extend the existing distribution line?
Oh, move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, all right. Request for proclamation from Lynn Lundy.
She just sent me this email, wanting to know if you all would do a proclamation. And I put that in her pocket with what information. I don't, I don't know if she's here.
What is it?
It is, it's about, from what I read, if you look on this page where she's got it, to Mayor Gross. It's because she lost her sister to pancreatic cancer, and I think that she just, she just wants to do, the proclamation is just declaring November the seventeenth as World Pancreatitis Cancer Day in the city of Kingston Springs, so.
Does that seem as, as world, world pancreatic cancer then?
Yeah, so I just told her I would bring it before you all, if you're interested, well, then we can prepare it and bring it back for approval next month.
Which is, next month is November seventeenth.
Yeah, I mean, if you could, you want to approve it now, that's fine, and you'll just type it up, it's just.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve the proclamation declaring November seventeenth World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Kingston Springs?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
There's no, we have no letter, we just have the original email, the text.
No data.
She sent, you should have in there is all, where she did a letter to Mayor Gross, which really kind of explains.
Is that the end of the email? I don't think the email was.
It didn't get in there? Um, will you let me pass this past you all?
No, this doesn't have a date, that's all I'm asking, somebody knows the date.
All right, request for approval to move court from every month to every other month. I'm sorry, on to item B, which is a request for, for people to move court from every month to every other month.
Chief, I.
With the court, the judge having to come from Ashland City once tomorrow, looked at a number of tickets and how many people to pay, and Rita had some guilt that they would try to move a figure out tomorrow, asked Debbie, and she wouldn't oppose, so that was Judge Max, and he thought that was a good idea, so we just need permission to have to agree tomorrow instead of everything. It really doesn't affect anything except for, you know, the state of.
There'd be a few more cases.
Yeah, I mean, we hadn't, Debbie and I hadn't, I, I've not asked the judge specifically, but I guess my thinking is, it would be, he would get the same rate as if he was coming, because the workload's gonna be the same, because he's coming every other, so. It's not gonna save him, I would bring him a safe, so he'll stay out, bring him tomorrow, so.
All right, do we have a motion to, to approve moving court from monthly to bi-monthly?
Oh, no.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, all right. Item E, Christmas decorations.
I just put that on your agenda.
Because we haven't purchased any Christmas decorations for a couple of years.
Right, and I'm beginning to get calls from the people that sell them, wanting to know, do we want any? So you all have seventy-five hundred dollars in there, so I'm just wanting to know, did you want to purchase any new?
I, I think we should, it's my understanding that this isn't like the optimal time of year to purchase those. Just in the general market for Christmas decorations, so, so it's something we, we do need to, to take care of, because we continue to add some money in, to this fund every single year. I know that there was a point where Joy had gotten some of the quotes and stuff back from these folks, and some people wouldn't give us quotes, and they're, she had some difficulty dealing with some of them, because most of them just want to know how much money you have.
Right.
And, so, so, you know, it really just, it's gonna take somebody to learn it's about.
We had a committee, I mean, remember, maybe in the discussion, it kind of fizzled out.
Yeah, and it's come up every year at, it's come up every year at retreat, it's kind of a perennial question of what we're going to do for Christmas decorations, so.
So that's a question for you, I mean, if you want to do it in the spring, or?
I'll do it right after Christmas, that's when they all say it.
Yeah.
I've got some of them magazines, I was on their mailing list.
Yeah, that's when we buy the fourth of July fireworks, right?
And I don't know, Clint, make an answer that, I mean, if you buy more, you know, do we have to have Dixon Electric come out and do something to the poles?
We would, on any additional poles, we'd have to have Dixon Electric add the electricity to the poles, we'd need to figure out where they are. And then the other thing that comes up, of course, every time, is whether or not you want to do LED or the, or the bolts, and, and so.
So you want to try to put a committee back together?
The other ones are gonna look odd, so.
So what's your will, I mean, do you wish to put a committee back together to discuss it, or?
Let's put a, 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 like, wow, down on, on the produce place, you know, put a big decoration there.
And then you have your electricity, I got you.
We discussed, go ahead, Patrick.
That, that was, that was, some residents on that side of town have requested to put some lights on that side, because they don't have, happen to, everyone on this side of the interstate does, so, so that, that was sort of the goal of that.
I think John could work on that project.
Get magazines still.
I do get magazines, and, and, and I'm getting calls.
You know, and actually, that's actually not an awful idea.
What's that?
John.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, great.
You know, because it, what it really takes is, is sitting down, and I'll get Joy, she's talked with all these people and has experienced.
Right.
And, and, and had all the difficulties with communicating with them, and she can explain that all to you, and hopefully, you, you won't be as bashful with them as. Go in there.
Okay.
Awesome.
We'll get you guys together.
Get your magazines.
I get, mine's old, I'll find out if I still got them, but they send them here all time to City Hall.
Yeah, display magazine, yeah.
Okay.
There, there's no shortage of those.
They usually got their sales in there after Christmas.
That's when I buy them, I.
A whole lot cheaper.
They have some that are, look like dolphins wearing Santa hats, I think that would be perfect for Kingston Springs.
Do we know that?
Yeah, that ocean we got, yeah.
All right, so I, I guess we've kind of settled that, we're gonna have, have our soon-to-be assistant city manager look into that.
Good.
All right. Item F, appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Assigned Construction Appeals, and we do have someone that would like to serve on the board, and it is our very own Steve Cooper, so. Is this my appointment, I believe?
It's an appointment by the Board of Informationers.
By the Board, so, do we have a motion to appoint Steve Cooper to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Motion to appoint Steve to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Congratulations, Steve, I don't know if you're watching the video. All right, G is to set the date for the beer board meeting, we've all, I think, have some idea about this, but this would be for September the first.
November the first.
November the first.
Sorry, November the first, I'm.
September would be better.
September would work much better, but we don't have a time machine, so.
At nine AM?
Nine AM.
At nine AM, here, Tuesday? All right, do we have a motion to set the, to set that meeting for November first?
Motion to set the beer board meeting for November first at nine AM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Tony, before you move on, I will ask you all again, we need two people for the Board of Signs and Constructions. That's been vacant for a very long time, we really need to fill those seats.
Heck, I have a, I have an idea, I need to. Actually, I have a, I have an idea, I need that.
Mayor, before you move on, you've got, oh, I've got, hold on. Go ahead. Um, the AFP grant system, uh, I was applying for last year, uh, been yet, that grant period is opening in, and I would like to issue to resubmit the grant for this issue.
I am one hundred percent in favor of doing that, I think it'd be great if we can get it. We have a motion to, uh, to Chief Ivy to resubmit the grant for the assistant firefighters. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, all right.
Before we sign, John, do any, really direct-
I know, we're, we're about to, we, we've already given him, he's on the park board right now, I guess we'll have to actually replace you on the park board, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
All right, item H. is recognize John Lawless as a newly hired assistant city manager, and he's going to start on October twenty-sixth, which is next-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, so.
You don't have to wait till then, do you?
I'll start tomorrow. It's a, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here, and, um, I really look forward to working hard for each of you and for the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thirteen surplus items? You don't have any, and, uh, do we have anything else for discussion?
I have one thing under other.
Okay.
Um, um, the retirement with the state came by and visited me, and they're now offering 401Ks and 457s. Um, it's no cost to the city, it's just, you just have to make a motion to approve, and so if there's any employees that wish to open up and have a 401K, they can do that through the state system.
Okay.
And they said they'd be happy to come out at the meeting, that would explain all that, but there's no cost to the city whatsoever, but you just have to say it's okay to do it.
Can we go and add that to the November meeting?
I can, would-
Or would we like to wait till you're back, maybe, and do it on December meeting?
Okay, we can, and would you like them to come out and explain it, or, you okay?
I mean, it seems like straightforward enough.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, you can, I mean, if you want to, I mean, if you wanna contribute, you, you can make that decision to do that, but, or you can just say, just like we have life disability insurance, but the city, the employee pays for it a hundred percent, there's no cost to the town. You just can't offer it. So, I'll put it on December's agenda.
December sounded it.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, all right.
Aye.
Aye.